On some other properties in the city center. And they're struggling with whether or not they want to comply with the restriction that says you have to have the, a second floor. And you have to have the look of a second floor, not only the look of a second floor. You have to have the second floor built out to such an extent that somebody could occupy it, whether they occupy it or not. All that stemmed from, again, after Hurricane Charlie, the Citizens Master Plan and our land development codes. And that's a, and so they come to us, and sometimes they're able to make it work, sometimes they're not. And for the most part, we still have some infill properties that are not developed, and we can wait. But what are we getting at? Are we trying to get at the architectural look? Is that what we're trying to get at? Because if we are, we can make it easier for some of these folks, if they want to develop some of these infills, to have the architectural look, the facade of a second floor, even though it's not built out that way. Save them some dollars, and in the future, if they want to build it out, so be it. Or, or are we requiring them to spend the money to build out something that they may never occupy? Because the downtown look is more than just one-story suburban type. So we have two very viable developments heading north into the city. One is the V in front of the church, as you come where the 241s bear, you know, bear off. And another one is across from downtown Gators. They may be able to meet some of our requirements, they may. The other one is a business that our first, at first blush, they don't want to. Maybe we can convince them to try and work with them. We try and work as best as we can, but we're struggling.
I mean, I, I think what we've enacted is, you know, the best-case scenario, but without any wiggle room, like you said, some of these people are being flat-out turned away. Especially in the case with the V, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty small lot. I mean, that's not a, no, it's big. It is big. So I guess that's the struggle, is like, you know, the, the optimal look versus what's feasible and what's doable for people that, you know, that used to be a gas station. Would much rather see a nice building there, I mean, even if it is a one-story than, than a gas station. So I guess, you know, we do, we do need to rethink some of these and see, see where we're at. I know, in the case of some of the newer buildings that have been built, that was an ex, quite an expense to have to build out the second floor for, you know, the extent that, that we require. That is a significant expense, so I don't know. It's a lot to think about. Nancy?
Well, you know, I, I really appreciate what Mitchell has prepared for us, to help stimulate this discussion and give us some, some ideas. And I, I know that we spent a lot of time back in 2005 with the, a week-long of charrettes to get community involvement. And Jaime Correa put together a considerable list of, of standards in the Citizens Master Plan that became, helped, became part of the basis for the rewrite of the LDRs back in 2005, I think. So, but that was 12 years ago. And, and I agree with Howard, that we keep butting into some of these codes that, and I, you know, while a developer or a business may not want to do something, on one side, it's, it's, we look the way we look because we did put these codes in place, and we do, this community has developed nicely, recovered nicely. And it's why up in Port Charlotte, they're doing, you know, facelift 41, to try to look more like what we look like, because it's really attractive and all those kinds of things. On the other hand, there may be some of our codes that might not be, give us the flexibility we need, and I think that's the feedback that you got, Howard, when you had roundtable discussions. And so there may be some that we feel that we can give some flexibility, you know. So they build a tall roof. It doesn't mean that there's anything in it, but that could be empty. I know that was one of the things we talked about back in the City Marketplace for the previous owner, when the previous owner of the City Marketplace property was proposing some kind of a U-shaped shopping. And one of the things we were, I know I remember standing here and opining as the representing team Punta Gorda, was we didn't want to see fake storefronts. We wanted to see full height, whether it's a, a, one ceiling, one floor, or a floor and a half, or two, it had to be the whole roof structure, because this previous owner had built a, something up in Northport, where the second floor is just a, a fake, like a Hollywood movie set. It's up there, you can see it. It's this craziest-looking thing. So we didn't want that downtown. So, you know, I, I'm wondering, and some of these questions come to mind, on what-sized lots. We didn't address small lots, and, and, well, what do you do about this small lot? And what, you know, I know you mentioned, well, this, we wouldn't have to restrict on the side of the building. I don't want to see straight up on it, on any side of the building, really, because we don't want to create wind tunnels. And, you know, we, we went over to Delray Beach, a group of us, back in 2006, and looked at Delray Beach and what they've done, and they, you know, it's like two stories, and then you start terracing up to avoid that. So I would even say, for me, some of these things that you, that are ideas, after three stories, then you start stepping back. Even to add a fifth story, so that it's, we start stepping back. Question came to my mind is, as we look at all this, there's so much to consider before even writing code. Do we want to have a workshop where we can really discuss, get down into more specifics and nitty-gritty, or some kind of charrette, where we can actually talk about the nitty-gritty in more detail, to provide more feedback to staff before we give you, just to give our community an opportunity to provide some input on these things? Just a question.
I mean, from what we've heard is, and this is the conflict that I keep going back to, is that the Spring Hill Suites. Well, that was a variance, that was 59 feet, and everybody wanted it, but yet they don't want to change the 50-foot rule. So how do we get past that? So, you know, whatever, I don't know that we'll get past that, because they just say, high-rise, high-rise, you know, they go to one, from one extreme to another, and I, you know, I just, I don't know, because the Spring Hill Suites is a prime example of, they couldn't get to where they needed to be within our code. And that's for the discussion, that this is really not the process that we should be going through to allow the additional height. And this, this is a great project for our community. I mean, not just the construction jobs, but the, the long-term jobs that, that they're going to provide. So imagine if all that walked away, because people came in red shirts and we said no. You know?
Well, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I think, I think back to when I ran for City Council the first time. One of the big questions I got was, what are we going to do about this empty space downtown? And people ask that constant question, what are we going to do about this? And that's not the only empty space downtown. There are lots of empties, and they've been empty. And, and, you know, I, I understand the suggestion of, well, lower the price and make it reasonable, that, that's not the way it works. And so we have to seek innovative solutions to be able to figure out, how do we solve this puzzle? And I think what you're offering is some kind of, let's all be innovative about this, so that we can figure out a way to help us see some of the infill occur, see some of the missing teeth come back, so that it's, and, and yet retain the historic character of the community. One of the things I saw, I was at a Punta Gorda History Center board meeting yesterday, and in the new History Center is a beautiful photograph of the old Punta Gorda Hotel. It was seven stories tall, up to the top of the tower. Now, seven stories back then, they had high ceilings, because they didn't have air conditioning. So each story was what, how tall would you think a story would have been? Because it's a picture of a car in front of one, and it, and the story was still really high.
In, in the South, in traditional vernacular architectures, you see story heights up to 18 feet.
And so, you, you know, that building was probably 100 feet tall. And we herald that as, as our history. And, and, you know, it's revered, it's, we have a mural. So I, I look at that, and I think it's, it, but it's only that at the very peak. It's not uniformly 100. So it's how do we achieve these without having uniformly raising the height? So I get what you're trying to drive to?
That we've asked him to drive to. We've asked for this, so it's really us.
We have, but I think it's, but it gets back to the, this is the, the uniform question that everybody seems to want to know, is what are we going to do about this vacant lot downtown?
Well, they can go for a PD, right? I mean, that's what happened in the past.
Yes, but I'm just saying, we get asked.
Yes.
So what we're trying to say is, it's not just that property, but it's others. And what are we going to do to try to help stimulate some of these things without giving away the ship?
Correct.
And retain the historic character.
And you, you opine that a case-by-case basis is not the way, and I know that's not the way developers want to come and deal with a government.
Well, let's, if we're talking about from a variance perspective, and what I've been saying, and, you know, along, including today, is that if the hardship is self-created, that is, I want to have this structure which is above the requirements, that's not a legitimate basis for a variance. And if the City Council says, yeah, but it would be good for the city, you know, for jobs and what have you, and so we're going to grant the variance, that's really an unlawful use of our process. That's not to say we can't invent some different type of process and not call it a variance. And, you know, this sort of gives a framework for doing something like that. The only concern that I have is that when we do that, is that you, and, and even since this code, our current code was adopted, the, the courts, including the US Supreme Court, has said that, you know, you can't make a developer do something for the benefit of the public, so that they can gain some sort of additional advantage, whether it's height or otherwise, unless that is necessary to ameliorate an impact caused by that development. For example, you know, here we're talking about a courtyard, and I didn't want to ask then, but I'll ask now, why you, why would you require a courtyard?
To provide additional open space to break up the mass of the building.
Okay. So now, does, is that something to provide a benefit to the public?
It, it amelior, it ameliorates the effect of the mass of the building as it becomes more massive.
So in order to defend a lawsuit, we would have to find some experts that would say that, that having a mass of a building is detrimental to the public in general, when masses of buildings have been in existence for a real long time, and people aren't shooting themselves because the, the mass of the building, I mean, being facetious there. So, you know, I think a very strong argument could be made, that in order to allow for additional height, we're requiring this developer to actually create a public area that the public wouldn't otherwise have to be paying for at their expense, and it's not necessarily to ameliorate a direct impact as a result of the building. So we just need to be very careful, is what I'm saying, in, in, in how we can construct this, these regulations.
Gary?
Couple of items is, when we talk about going up in height, that seems to be the predominant about, uh, direction of this, but we just heard from Howard that we have a developer that the problem is, is that they don't want to put up two stories. It also seems to me that one of the constrictions to the height of a building that would be built in Punta Gorda that we're not discussing is, is the cost of going up. As you go up in height, your cost per square footage goes up, because you have to engineer various masses. Because as you go up in height, you're adding more and more mass, and there are structural issues and so forth. So it's, and then there's also the cost of land in Punta Gorda versus other communities. Our costs are probably relatively low compared to other communities, such as Naples or downtown Fort Myers. Reason that you go up, when you live in the city of Chicago like I did, or if you live in Manhattan, New York, it's because the, the land is so valuable, the only way you can make it profitable is by pushing your mass up as high as you can. So we're not going to have a Hancock Building, or an Empire State Building, somebody wanting to build that here. And then you also have the constraints of the property itself, and we're experiencing that just with the library. As we started to remediate the land so that we could build a library that isn't anywhere near these heights, we're finding that additional costs that weren't expected to be able to make the soil sufficient to hold the mass of that building. There may be some of these kind of issues in our downtown area also. And those, they're going to limit the height, too. We have a responsibility, I think, as council and as staff, to set up a reasonable set of rules to dictate, such as we're, we're trying to discuss here. I think our primary concern should be a number of the issues that Mitchell is addressing here, and in the other one case, of what the architectural ambiance is that we're looking for in the city of Punta Gorda, and the personality and so forth. The, if, if somebody wants to build a one-story building and put up a reasonably good facade that fit the architectural constraints and desires that we want to maintain as a community, that's fine. It should be fine, and we shouldn't get in their way. If somebody, and I, I think, and I'm not sure if that's where this eight-story came by, came up or not, but I, I seem to recall in one of the previous meetings, I said, if somebody came with a master plan for that big piece of property inside our city, and they want to put up an eight-story building as a centerpiece of it, with a beautiful plant around it, I could go along with that. But that doesn't mean I'm promoting that I want to see an eight-story building put up in that area. That's not what I was meaning, and that wasn't the content. I want to see, I would like to see a developer come through with something that is really wow, something that we in Punta Gorda would be all proud to have and so forth, that would fit within the infrastructures that the city can also promote. And the same thing as you go down Marion, east of, of, towards the, towards the hospital, those areas, I think we want to have these same type of constraints. Linda and I were just, just not too long ago, had the opportunity to go visit some family in Colorado, and we went to Punta Gorda. And in Pearl Street, which is an old...
Boulder.
Boulder, excuse me, sorry. I said Punta Gorda. Well, okay, okay, okay. Boulder, yes. Thank you, I'm glad I had this conversation with Howard previously.
What were you smoking, Ron?
What was I smoking? Hey, Kate, pasa. But anyway, Pearl Street is a old commercial district with some beautiful old storefronts and buildings and restaurants that were built in the 1880s, and you could kind of see the evolution. When you get to the end of Pearl Street, there were these five-story buildings that we saw, that had stores on the front, and they were terraced every single floor. There was a reason for that. And when you're right next to it, you look up, you don't see that terracing. But when you're across the street, it aesthetically was quite pleasing, because you saw these multi-use terraces, and people had some plants on their, their patios and so forth, and it was beautiful. So those types of things are available with the techniques that, that Mitchell is proposing here. I think it's a complicated, convoluted thing, we want to do it right. I think we have to have this discussion. I commend staff. I believe in trying to devise things and, and educate us on the way these work architecturally, so that we don't have discussions that are erroneous, that, that are misleading. Where I do believe we're a transparent government, we're a transparent council, we're not putting out smoke and mirrors, and that this is a way, this type of discussion is absolutely necessary. So I think we have to continue this discussion, so that we can develop our coding in the future, to have us have something that's really special, because I think that's what the community can have and deserves. Thank you, by the way.
John?
First, I want to speak on the development by Gators. I've been working with that developer, and, yes, the issue of having a functional second floor that's not functional is just an additional expense, especially when you're talking about how that long piece of land, which is a lot. And that's one of those things that could probably make them go through it, make it easier to go through. I want to share with, I want to share, everyone still present, let's see. Mitch, could you just show, this is some of the old timers.
Yes.
I was at the History Center yesterday, sitting with some of the old timers, and I went there for the purpose of really showing who Punta Gorda is and who we've been. And there's, there's some idea that Punta Gorda is a sleepy town, and never has been a sleepy town. It, it always has been a small city, which had a very robust economy, which is based on the industries related with Old Florida, Gulf Coast, and, and seasonal residents, which is like fishing, cattle, phosphate, tourism. This is the first time in history of this city where we do not have a year-round economy to support its working residents. This is something I think that is really not impacting on us, is that us not having a, a robust downtown is hindering us in a way that the city, in 130 years, we've not been in the place we're in right now. And why I'm showing these pictures is that I want people to understand that Punta Gorda has always had buildings that have been taller than we have right now. This, and this is also showing that we stagger the heights, that with good architecture, we don't have issues with monolithic buildings. At this point now, we could have a whole bunch of fat 50-story buildings, which are really horrible architecture. This, this is beautiful, and this is actually who we are. And we, I guess we cannot fail to also understand that we've still not recovered from Hurricane Charlie. There, we're 200 businesses less than we had after the storm. And we have to do what we need in order to get ourselves back on track. We, in order for us to be able to offer residents the services which, which they like, and not raise taxes, we have to have a commercial residential ratio of 75 to 25 percent. We're at 10 percent right now. And so us not having a downtown that's vibrant is, is a major issue. And I think that what Mitchell's done, he, he's done exactly this. This is how Punta Gorda was designed. We have, we have good architecture, it has things like setbacks, proper places of vegetation and lighting, we can very easily have a street-level view, which no one would even know the heights. But I, I do think it's, it's just very important for us to understand that our city cannot survive unless we do this. We have Northport, and we have Babcock Ranch, which are actually serious about maintaining a vibrant economy. And we, right now, we're, we're just lucky that we're this, we're the county seat. If we're not serious about supporting our working population, we will have a major issue. We're not going to be able to have the lifestyle we have right now. So this is just an example of, I'm in full support of having them continue in creating architecture in this manner. I, I think that, again, like I said earlier, that we should allow urban design to practice their craft, and I think that they've done a very good job. And I think that with, with the conditions which Mitchell and his team have put on it, I think we'll have a beautiful downtown. But I think if we do not do this, we do not have the option to not do this. I, I think we're, we're waiting for some mystery person to make a bunch of, like, somehow economically viable 50-story, 50-foot buildings. That's not going to happen, not in this day and time. We actually need to understand that this is who we are, and we need to return to our actual nature as Punta Gorda, which is a place which actually is a robust economy with a small-town character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor, looking at the photos that you've been presenting, I'm fairly certain that there weren't any zoning regulations...
No.
...that required the structures to be built in that aesthetically pleasing fashion. And, and I'm guessing that the reason why people build structures that are aesthetically pleasing is to attract people to them. Does the market command how buildings should be built in the absence of the reg, the detailed regulations that we're now talking about?
We, there weren't particular regulations, but, but there was a desire to have a product which a tourist customer, basically, that was built that way, because you had seasonal residents that came from that Long Island, Western Long Island, like kind of Great Gatsby kind of area, like Port Washington and the area, that you had to build in this manner to attract this kind of person. And, you know, we've always had strong tourism, but our tourism wasn't like our leader like it is now. We also balanced it other things. And at this point, in general, we need to make it so that, probably at this point, we want to have robust retail space. But I do think if we were to build in the character of, I mean, of who we are, I think playing to the, to historical nature that we have, I think that's a tourist product. I mean, that's also a retail product. I think that we don't actually provide our people what they need, and I think that if we think about really, really providing for the public, you know, really for the public good, in terms of really providing the optimum use of this space, with the optimum use of who we are and our heritage, I think that we can actually create a very viable, good downtown. But like you said, they wouldn't have had those rules, but probably the rules of capitalism required them to build that way. If they desired to have robust downtown, and they wanted to be the leader, because Punta Gorda was the most prosperous town in Florida at one time, because it took its business seriously. And I think that we can have a very prosperous town, again, if we take business seriously.
So, so my question is this, and I'm asking it as a lawyer, because I don't have the architectural experience or knowledge. If, if we did not have any specific limitations on height and setbacks and things for the downtown, I would guess that it would take one ugly building that the people would rebel against, that would ultimately dictate that the future buildings wouldn't be structured like that one ugly building?
We had that one ugly building.
Yes.
It was called the Professional Center, and it sat where the Sunloft Center is now.
I'm sorry, I had it.
We had that one ugly building, it was called the Professional Building, and it was exactly where the Sunloft Center sits now.
It was a glass, a glass building?
Glass box.
Right. And so, and I'm just asking this question in a hypothetical fashion. How important is it to have government provide the limitations on, on, on the height of buildings downtown?
All right, I would, just, just off of aesthetics.
Well, that's, I'm not, well, see, we didn't have them back in the day, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I, I would say, you know, again, this is an example, the next time we meet, I mean, if we have workshop or whatever, I'll actually bring pictures. There's a street called Montesando, which is where all the fashion district is in Tokyo. And it's a tree-lined street, they have the buildings, you really can't see them, because they've done such a good job with the design at the street level, that even if there was an ugly building, you wouldn't see the ugly building. And, and I, I do think that probably an argument can be found, in terms of, I guess, I think, I would think an architectural style argument could be made. I think that we decide, like, we, you know, if Mitchell and his staff were to make an argument that this is who Punta Gorda is, and this is how we design, and we need to have these kind of recesses and setbacks and lighting things. I, I think there can probably be a design argument that can be made, I mean, but I do think government should do it, like in the case of Tokyo. I'm fairly sure that their government has strict rules on how that street's going to look, because they, because, again, the one bad building, the one out of spot, the one that doesn't have that is going to be the one messes everything up, everybody. I think for, probably to be, to answer, probably for the collective good of our businesses, you would want to have a cohesive plan that's going to benefit all the other businesses around. Maybe that's one argument, I don't know.
Yeah. Thanks.
Lynn?
I do, first of all, thank you, Mitch, for all of the work that you've done on this, on this idea. I do see a need to consider relaxing the code slightly to accommodate some of the buildings that we would like to have in our downtown center city. I do also see the need to maybe update some of the master plan ideas from 2005, 2004, because I think our community has changed dramatically since that time. And I would love to see some of these projects come to fruition that are on the table right now. And I hate to see people have to spend money that they don't really need to spend by building a two-story building they can't occupy. So I do see a need to modify some of the, the code restrictions, and, and to consider relaxing the height code slightly. However, I am not in favor of issuing a blanket, we can build up to eight stories tall, kind of a amendment to our code, because I don't think that's what the people in this city want. I have talked, over the past week, I've probably talked to over 200 citizens in the community, and, and there's a very clear message that they don't want it to become Fort Myers. I understand that. There, but there is a certain amount of building that we would like to have come into our community.
So what would the number be? Do you have any idea?
Well, I mean, I could understand perhaps relaxing the code to 60 feet for height. I'm not sure I'm in favor of going with the number of stories, because I think it's up to the builder to decide how many stories he's going to build within that.
Well, if you give him 60 feet, he's only going to be able to, or he, or she, I mean, that's the whole, yeah, thought process behind it.
I just think it still needs to be governed by the city council to ultimately decide what the height is going to be. And if a builder wants to come in and build something higher than that, then they can go through some process, whether it's a variance or something else, if we decide there's a new process we'd like to use. And I don't think we want to turn down any viable project that comes down the pike, because we do want to fill in the missing teeth in the downtown area. And I'd like to see our business community become more profitable, for lack of a better way to say it. But I think the city also needs the business, commercial sales tax that comes with all of that, in order for us to continue growing and prospering in the future. And the current businesses downtown are struggling right now. So we do want to have some of that development. I'm just not in favor of a blanket, of a change of the height restriction across the board. I think we still need to have some restrictions on it.
John?
See, we're one of the few places where someone has to go to do Jodgens, period, and just throw the ball up in the air and hope something lands, and then the time go away. I mean, like, I'm looking just, if we're going off of our precedent of, let's say, that building right there, that was 103 feet. If we just do four stories, 14 foot, plus five feet for your FEMA, that's 75 feet. I've asked builders whether it's a good number, 75, 76, if we're going to have a number. But one thing, I think, people are worried about us becoming Naples or Sarasota, we're older than both of those cities. If we were going to be that city, we would be them already. We were incorporated before them, and I think it's really understood, people in the city have known what they've wanted, and we look to what we want to. And I think that if we simply return to pretty much our heritage, we will have a properly-designed downtown that allows for beautiful architecture. This 50-foot, even 60-foot, this arbitrary numbers does not reflect our nature. It reflects some reaction, which is really not responsive to us having really a robust city.
And I think from what we're hearing is, we are stagnated now. It's not going to be in 10 years, it's now. People are coming here with projects. They're not going to purchase the land if they think they're going to have to jump through 25 hoops. I mean, I don't want to be the Department of No, but when we get in, you know, staff has to do strict and literal reading of what's in the books, and that's their job. And when the book says no, then they got to tell those people no. So I don't know, the flex, we definitely need some kind of flexibility. If it's a number, I guess we can start looking at that. Eight, I think eight would be too high for me as well. I like the ideas up until eight. Seven even would be, it would be hard.
Yeah.
But if we could tie it to minimizing the impact.
Yeah. Do we have a daylight plan ordinance?
No.
A what plan?
Okay. This is something that a lot of jurisdictions are doing, and it's been around for a while. And the idea is, the higher, and it's kind of like what Mitchell was saying, but the higher you go, first of all, you have to either create more, an increase in the setbacks, but then the higher you go, there's like a 45-degree angle, so that the buildings are stepped back to maintain sunlight and air. And maybe that's, it's a tried and true method that's around in our area, and it's well-justified. And so, that way, you don't really have, although I suppose there's no reason why we couldn't put a maximum height limit, but the height is limited by the land that you have available to meet the required setback. As you go up, the setbacks get bigger, and as you go up, the angle diminishes how high you can go, limited by the size of the property.
I like that. Is there a way you can incorporate that? Maybe that language is probably what we're going to need to do to defend ourselves.
Well, in terms of the actual language development, staff hasn't done anything yet. We've just been throwing out concepts. But essentially, in terms of the physical form created, that was the intent.
Gary?
We just use different language than lawyers as urban designers for describing it.
I actually kind of, although I didn't think of it in terms of sunshine, I think that what we've got here is a presentation that's been given to us, that's had a lot of thought into it, with the idea of keeping open spaces, not having wind tunnels, to have lights, et cetera. I think that as a councilperson, sitting up here with a set of skills that don't necessarily have an expertise in urban design, but having learned enough to understand that I have to think our staff has a little bit of expertise in this area, and we want to have what those height restrictions are, I think we're all in agreement, we want some kind of height restrictions, just what dictates that. You know, we can pick a number. It may be a physics question, it may be an architectural question, it could be any one of a number of questions, and/or a combination of those two. And I think it's really, would be who, from my perspective, to let our urban design staff take these issues that we've just brought up together and use their magical craft to come up with a way that we, I think we're all on the same page of where we want to go. At least I'm getting that sense. We have questions among us on, you know, how high that is, want to go, or what those are, but in a cohesive way, I think we're pretty much, I'm getting a sense that we're in agreement, and I think that we should direct our staff now to take this additional information and to try to use their magical craft to come up with where we, how we can express it more readily, in a way that we can do this architecturally and maintain what we want for Pontegorroda.
I would agree. Lynn?
I would like to see if the staff could possibly put together a potential rendering and take the strip right where River City Grill is, and take Rachel's three lots and put.
They're not high. One lot.
Well, it's three parcels, right?
Yeah.
So take those three parcels and put a 70-foot building on that in a rendering and show it to us.
Well, in terms of what staff has proposed, the maximum height on any one of those buildings would be five stories, because they would be less than a block face, and they would be significantly less than half of a platted block.
Okay, but just for the sake of argument, could you put together a rendering of what a five, a six, and a seven-story building might look like on that?
A five-story would be all that we would propose. We wouldn't do that.
So that we can get a perception of what it would actually look like. I understand it can't be built on that space, but just for the sake of looking at a rendering and getting a visual impact of what that could potentially look like, I would like to see that. I think that would be important.
Well, whatever goes along with what was practical in your, I don't want to see something that's not, yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, for the sake of comparison, so you could see what it potentially might look like in the downtown area. That's all I'm trying to say.
So.
And then make one with all 50-foot buildings, so we can see what that's going to look like, too.
Because that's what's, that is what's allowed by COVID now.
I have a question about that, because right now, our code says 50. Is there any way that we can change our code so that if a lot is tiny, they can't go to 50? Because some of these.
That's a legal question.
You know. I mean, it's like going to be really ugly to see some little tiny lot that's 50-foot.
That's allowed right now.
I know.
That's why we have a problem. We have to scuff it.
And I know that the architect who designed the Sunloft Center really wanted to build all 50 feet on the City Marketplace property, and that would look, excuse, ugly. And so, and that's why I was suggesting even stepping back after two or three stories is more important. I wouldn't want to see more Sunloft Centers.
If you, again, rather reinvent the wheel. If you take a look at what jurisdictions in our areas and elsewhere have done in the nature of what they call this daylight plane ordinance, which has been upheld, and so we know it's legal, and you pick a, you know, you pick a maximum height of whatever, or a average height, and then you impose this daylight plane ordinance that says you can go as high as you can go, as long as you fit into the parameters that have been established, meaning that, you know, if you have a narrow lot, in order to meet that daylight plane ordinance, you may not be able to go more than, you know, three stories, or two stories, or whatever. But if you have a huge lot, like, you know, the Marketplace, you might be able to go pretty much like what we have in this photo, as long as it ultimately remains in that well-recognized formula to make sure that from aesthetics and from light and from air, you don't have this massive monolith that's going straight up, you know, 200 feet.
Yeah, you really can't see it. When it's done properly, you really don't see the building heights. I've really seen this several times.
Do you have some, are you getting some direction here?
I do have one point of clarification that I would like from the city attorney in regards to, currently, we have a 50-foot height limit. And it's my understanding, under the provisions of the Burt Harris Act, that we, any restriction on that, additional restriction, may be subject to legal action by those property owners.
You mean those property owners that would say, well, right now, we have the right to go 50 feet?
Correct.
And, you know, and then we might certainly be able to put some sort of vested rights provision in the code that relates solely to those current owners. So, I mean, we're not going to, there's ways to address that. If they, I'll just leave it at that. There's a way to address, how we make changes in the current code that are more restrictive than otherwise. In fact, you know, the standard legal argument is that when you buy a piece of property and it's zoned a particular way, you're not guaranteed that there won't be a change in the zoning, for example, downzoning, which has been recognized as legally appropriate.
What we wanted to get today is, do you want to keep the status quo or not?
Yes.
Yes, please.
What I'm hearing is, we do not, we want to continue the conversation. And that's what we will do.
Do we want to have a workshop to really be able to sit and talk about this more?
I mean.
So we can really dig into details?
The only hesitation I have with the workshop is that they generally, I mean, some people are there for the right reasons, and we get some good input from those, but I don't know.
Well, to be able to talk more, about more details about all this. I mean, I feel like we could.
We really don't have anything yet to talk about.
Yeah, we have to let him design, like, you know.
So we want to have staff come back with some more.
I would say, let's get a little bit further into something that we're really going to consider.
A little more specific, yeah. I don't want, I don't want staff to go off writing code right now, because I don't think we have enough specifics.
I agree.
I feel like you have spent all this time trying to craft code, and then we're going to start wordsmithing to death. I'd like for us to come back and talk more about some specifics of these, based on what the dialogue has been today, and then we can go there.
I just have one quick question. So you mentioned, and I agree with Lynn, that it would be nice to have a rendering of what it would look like around Marion, and you were saying that those would be five-story. Where in the center city could we put an eight-to-10-story building? Based on the rules that you presented to us?
Based on the rules that I've presented to you, it would be any lot, or where you basically have half a block or more. Off the top of my head, I can probably think of probably a dozen locations that would meet that criteria.
Would both of those be on the east of 41 along Marion?
Most of those would be east of 41 along Marion. You also have the old USAVE site, the two blocks of the City Marketplace. There are a couple of other blocks that exist where there's only like an existing one-story building that's nonhistoric in nature, a single owner owns, that could be potential redevelopment sites. Very few.
But here's the other.
Without lot accumulations.
I don't mean to open up a pen, I was just, this is a point of curiosity.
But the other, I guess the other thing I think about is, is taking some of these, I think about the property that's across from the Charlotte Community Foundation. That's a whole block, at the end of the block. And there's nothing around it that's really tall. So what, I would hope that what we produce is something that helps introduce the concept of scale, so that we encourage not five, you know, four stories, like right now, it could go 50 feet, but it's going to dwarf everything. So it's like helping introduce scale so that we don't all of a sudden end up, because our code says it can be 50 feet, we have all these buildings that all of a sudden make everything else around it seem out of place.
Certainly to address that type of issue, I know there are some, there's sort of two or three ways you can go about doing that. You could develop a master plan for the entire district and say, these particular blocks are suitable for X number of story maximums, these blocks are suitable for X number of stories, and step down from the center towards the surrounding uses.
I mean, that's really for a new, I mean, we're too old, we're too old to enact that now. I mean, that would be going back in time. We don't have that many vacant parcels to be able to really enact that. I mean, that's more for like a pre-platted area.
So do we have a consensus to go forward?
We do have a consensus, and Lynn had her hand up.
I do. If you're going to be digging in your archives anytime soon, could you find the renderings of the original City Marketplace concept that was approved? I probably have it in my archives at home from when I was on the Planning Commission. But we approved at the Planning Commission, and city council approved a building that exceeded the height limit, and it was a beautiful, beautiful project. And that would be nice for the current city council members to see, because that was already approved at one point in time, and it fell apart because of the developers' funds. But it would be really nice for us to see a potential project that could be built on that land.
Certainly.
And I'm sure that's in the archives somewhere.
And again, that's a PD, so we're really talking about infill, you know, more so than that specific property. So you have some direction?
Yeah, we're not going to maintain the status quo. We're going to come up with ideas, we're going to come up with ideas.
And when we get the ideas more defined, then we can take it to the public.
Right. Yay.
Okay.
Okay. All right, city manager.
No.
Nothing?
Nope.
City attorney?
Well, I was, there's been a lot of constructive discussion over the last couple of weeks to get us closer to a conceptual settlement agreement that I can bring forward to you. We're done with all the briefs, we're just waiting for going before the court to make our arguments, but this is the time where hopefully we can bring something that everyone can live with and avoid going to court, because no matter what decision the judge makes, one side or the other is likely to take an appeal. So the settlement would be to avoid that and make everybody go forward happy. I was hoping to hear this morning, in fact, I've been kind of keeping my eye on my emails, we're waiting to hear back from the petitioners, the heirs of Tribune, and apparently, it's taking a while to get them all on board with something. So soon, very soon, I think we're going to have something. We're close.
When is the court date?
There is no court date yet, so we're going to kind of hold that off. Hopefully, by the next city council meeting, we'll have something. And if I need to call a special meeting, I'll let you know. I hope not, there's certainly plenty of time between now and the next meeting to get this worked out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boards and committees, city clerk.
Did you want to make a comment first?
I would just like to make a quick statement about this. I'm very happy to see that we are starting to get some new blood applying for some of these seats on some of these committees. And I would, based on the fact that many of them are very qualified, it's in some cases very difficult to make a decision, but I would strongly encourage my colleagues to look at bringing some people on board in some of these committees who may have not ever had involvement with the city, and hopefully keep these committees vibrant going forward and keeping new blood involved. And that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, we've been consistently trying to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not duplicate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been brought up.
All right, starting with vacancies, we have an unexpired term on the utility advisory board, and an expired term as an alternate on the board of zoning appeals. We have two three-year terms on the building board, both of those individuals are eligible for reappointment, so we shouldn't have a problem there. And a three-year term on the historic preservation advisory board. Moving on to nominations, we have a three-year term on the planning commission with two eligible applicants for nomination. Nominate all? Thank you. Under nominations, we have an unexpired term on the board of zoning appeals, and we have two eligible applicants. And we have the same two eligible applicants under appointments for the board of zoning appeals. So if you would like to, I think your options are to either table these nominations for these two individuals and move on to, when we look at the appointments for this, and you'll, you'll choose one of these individuals, the other individual then would move on, and we could possibly get some additional applicants for those seats. Your second option would be to go ahead and nominate and appoint, as we do when we have one vacancy and we have one applicant, sometimes we'll nominate and appoint both. If you'd like to do that here, rather than going through the process of nominating the both, appointing one, and then waiting until August to eventually appoint the other one, because again, if we look at the, what we have traditionally done, council has a policy that once we've nominated individuals, we don't take additional applicants. That's why I would suggest if we, if we want more applicants, that we would table the nominations for one seat and appoint one individual to the other. Alternatively, you can nominate and appoint, as we've traditionally done, when we have an equal number of applicants to the number of seats. So it's up to you how you'd like to proceed with the boarding of zoning, the board of zoning appeals, the two seats.
You're suggesting waiting until August?
It would be waiting until August.
Waiting until August, and, and when we vote, then we can vote one to be the regular member and one to be the alternate at the same time.
Well, you could appoint someone today, we have two regular seats, and one, if we do appoint these two individuals, we're gonna have two alternate seats that are vacant.
That would be fine.
One of these individuals is not interested in the alternate seat. So we may not have that person interested in an alternate seat, but we do have two regular seats.
My only concern is, there were only five people seated at the last meeting, and that was using an alternate, so we're, we're getting very low on the quantity of people on that committee. And if, and if we jeopardize the, the quorum status because we don't have enough people, that could be a problem, if we wait.
So why don't we nominate and appoint both?
That's one of the options.
And now we need alternates.
If you would like to do that.
So then we have openings for alternates, so.
Just for alternates.
People should apply for that.
And we'll bring those vacancies forward.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would like to nominate and appoint both Dr. Lepore and Mr. Zapke. I'll second that.
We're gonna nominate and appoint the two members to the BZA. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie DeNansley.
And by the way, I am looking at the potential of consolidating.
Okay.
What I've found so far, some of it is relating to the uniqueness of the, of the various jurisdictions that may have done that before.
Well, the other thing, Karen and I were talking about this the other day, the, the BZA meets so infrequently that, that may be part of what, why, why we're having the problem with that committee. So that, that might be one of the things to consider when, when it goes to consolidation.
We looked up the, the number of meetings. In 2015, they met 15, or, sorry, 50% of the time. In 2016, the board of zoning appeals met twice all year. This year, they have, out of six months, have met five times, and that's possible because there's just a lot more going on in the city right now, so there's more issues going to the board, and so they, they need to schedule meetings. They would not schedule a meeting, obviously, if there's no business to come before the board, so.
Okay. Did we do the planning commission nominations?
Yes.
We did.
All right. All right, so moving on to appointments then, we have an unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee with two eligible applicants. Here are your voting forms. You're just voting for one, please.
This is a marathon today, not a sprint.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the, we don't need to do the appointment for BZA, and so last, under appointments, we have an unexpired term on the Front Street Isles Canal Advisory Committee, we have two eligible applicants. Here are your voting forms.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Policy and legislation, we have one little other item under code that you forgot to bring up, so Howard's gonna address it.
Yes, I have, on our one-on-ones, I think I mentioned this, I forgot to bring it up. It's not city center, maybe that's why I didn't bring it up. We have another viable proposal. A contractor wants to move into a, a building, and it's in a highway.